Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Daniel Grover is the pastor at Corpus Christi Church, and he's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stonecifer if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand at this time?
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we give thanks to you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city of Oklahoma City. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are all stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders that your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of all those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping our community to build a worthy people of human persons. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are pleased this morning to draw attention to Home Energy Aid Month, and we have some members here from the Salvation Army and who have been passionate about this issue for many years. Why don't you all come forward? And I know we work with OG&E and ONG and other public service organizations, but we have a proclamation. I'll ask the audience to listen carefully. This is a very important program and one that we're quite proud of.
Whereas during difficult economic times, the inability to pay energy bills can cause serious hardships to an individual or a family facing a financial emergency. Whereas Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company, Oklahoma Natural Gas Company, and Public Service Company of Oklahoma have each created a fuel fund whereby customers can make a contribution for those less fortunate. Whereas the names of these fuel funds are Lend a Hand, Share the Warmth, and Light a Life, respectively, and each utility company has joined with the Salvation Army to administer the funds. Whereas contributions to these fuel funds amounted to $370,000 for 2016, and 3,000 households were helped, which consisted of over 7,000 Oklahomans facing a financial crisis. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City recognizes and appreciates the thousands of utility customers who contribute to these fuel funds, the utility companies that make significant contributions and provide convenient methods for customers to contribute, and to the Salvation Army who administers the program. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of July as Home Energy Aid Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages the observance and participation of our citizens in supporting these Oklahoma Energy Assistance Programs.
We should thank OG&E, ONG, and the Public Service Company of Oklahoma. Can we have a round of applause? And Dan and Mary Matthews are relatively new to our community. They're now majors with the Salvation Army, so we owe you all a welcome to the city. You've come to us from not too far away.
That's right. We're here from Fayetteville, Arkansas. This is our second week on the job here, but about 20 years in the Salvation Army. So we are glad to be here as public servants and to serve this wonderful community. We have already seen how beautiful and wonderful Oklahoma City is. We're glad to be part of this wonderful program, and we just wanted everyone to know, mayor and council and everyone, that we've served over 1,000 families, and we have been able to spend significant dollars of 100, over $132,000 on these families that need help. So we're proud to be part of it with all of you, and we thank you for your part in all of this.
You're more than welcome, and so if you see Dan and Mary Matthews out on the street, welcome them to Oklahoma City on behalf of everyone. We love the Salvation Army. Thank you for everything you do. You can take that proclamation away. We're on item three of the council agenda. It's a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. All right. We're off to a good start. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for June 20th, and four B is to approve the journal for June 13th. Is there a motion? All right. Comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
None this morning, sir.
All right. Any requests for uncontested continuances from the council? All right. We'll move on to item six. It's revocable permits. The first is a request from Friends of Multi-Sport, Inc. to hold the 24 The Hardway event up in Ward Eight. Is there anyone here representing this organization? All right. Mark, you okay with this?
It's a great park. I'm, I think this is the great event, and so I've moved for its approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item six A. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item six B is a request with newspapers and education to hold the Bricktown Back-to-School Bash. They will do that on August 12th, and is Ashley Howard here? Ashley, come on up and tell us about this event.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us.
We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Ashley Howard. And I gave our business address, 100 West-
The business is fine, yeah.
100 West Main Street, Suite 100, Oklahoma City, 73102.
And tell us about the event, the Bricktown Back-to-School Bash.
Yeah, so this event is actually going to bring together lots of businesses along the Bricktown Canal. It's going to be a big family day, bringing characters and games and lots of fun things for families to do at the canal. It's also going to serve as a massive school supply drive, and we will be collecting funds for school supplies leading up to the event. The site itself will act as a physical drop for school supplies. We'll also be running our Duck Derby. We're racing rubber ducks from the stream at Bass Pro, and they'll actually let out into the canal. Just the winners will. We're going to manage that process.
Yeah, so how many, how many plastic ducks will you have?
Well, if it goes well, lots and lots and lots. That aspect of it is actually a fundraiser for our newspapers and education program.
So what's it cost to sponsor a duck in this country?
It is $5.
Really?
We might be able to put it in an honorary-
I want to do that. How would I do that if I want to sponsor a duck?
Well, if you go to our website, it's nieneewsokay/bricktownb2sb, and there's all the information about the event itself on there.
And the money goes toward buying school supplies for our listeners?
Well, there's two components. There is an area where you can donate money for school supplies, and then there's also an area where you can donate money to the newspapers and education program.
Both good causes.
Yes, sir.
All right. It's in Ward Seven. John?
Move the items.
All right. Cast your votes on six B. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you all.
All right. Item six C is a request with the Vietnamese-American Community of Oklahoma City for the Vietnamese-American Memorial Monument inauguration, and that's coming up this Saturday in Ward Two. Is there anyone here representing this event? I happen to know it starts at 3:30 because I'm going to be out there, but Ed, it sounds like a wonderful event, and I've seen pictures of the sculpture, but I've not seen it in person. I look forward to it.
And a decade in the making, so we'll look forward to Saturday. I move for approval.
All right. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item six D is a permit with the Episcopal Church Foundation of the Diocese of Oklahoma to hold the Red Dirt Carnival, the Episcopal Youth Convention. This would be July 12th at Seventh and Robinson in Ward Six. Is Julia Baker here? Yeah, come on up, Julia. And we'll also need your name and address for the record.
It's Juliet Baker, and the address for the Episcopal Diocese is 924 North Robinson, address 73, or zip code 73102.
All right. Tell us about the Red Dirt Carnival.
It is one part of the Episcopal Youth event that will be happening throughout the week. This will be a street carnival that is geared towards everything Oklahoma. We'll have some food trucks out there, the Energy Thunder represented, so it's just going to be a fun event for the Episcopal Youth that'll be coming in from all over the United States.
Oh, really? And so that's a week from today?
Yes.
So how many are you expecting in?
About 1,300.
1,300?
Yes.
Wow. Well, thank you for bringing this event into Oklahoma City.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we will.
We're excited.
We will be anxiously looking forward to them, and where will they be staying? Will they be staying near downtown?
At UCO.
At UCO, okay. Sounds all good. It's in Ward Six, Meg.
Great.
All right. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thanks again. All right. Item six E is a request from Try OKC to hold the Lake Stanley Draper Duathlon. Is anyone here hoping to hold this event? All right. It's in Ward Four, Todd.
It is. A beautiful lake draper. I go ahead and recommend we move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item six E. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item six F is a request with, from Friends of Multi-Sport, Inc. to hold the Redman Triathlon and Half Triathlon. This would be in September in Wards One, Two, and Eight. Is there anyone here hoping to speak about this event? All right. Obviously, this is an event that's been around a long, long time and is our top triathlon in the area, so, Mark, you've got to be pretty proud of this.
Yeah, I'll move the items.
All right. Motion and a second. Item six F. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll reassess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. I think we got a presentation from Christian New York. Christian, you want to give us a-
Well, we're going to adopt both. Go through the PPA and the MFA budgets both this morning. Christian's here from the Budget Office to start with the MFA.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning. I should mention you have a much more detailed budget available to you in your packets, but I'll just be giving you a brief overview of the changes in the MFA and the PPA. As a reminder to the citizens, these are trusts that the city utilizes to host a variety of functions, everything from workers' compensation to property and liability to civic center and capital projects. The reason we utilize the trust is because we're afforded some advantages in the trust in that we're able to engage in multi-year contracts. So any of these functions that would be impractical to house out of, say, the general fund, we would place over in the trust. There we are. So if we zoom into the OC-MFA and look at the budget by function, we can see that health insurance comprises the largest portion of the pie there at 66% or nearly $65 million. This is going to be for our active employee insurance, followed by workers' compensation at about $12 million, general purposes and other at $8 million. Information technology, this is going to be things like our software licensing for city computers at, right at $7.6 million. Advanced capital funding at $6 million, and then property and liability for city property at $2.6 million, and then a very small piece for unemployment at $225,000. That totals us out to right at $109 million, which represents about a 7% increase over prior year. I went and looked and just to see what the big movers were over prior year, and I can tell you, it's mostly with health insurance, which is up at about $10 million relative to prior year. Workers' compensation's down about $2 million, and then advanced capital's up about $1 million. If we look at our revenues by source, once again, insurance contributions, this is going to be funded through our payroll mechanism, basically funded by where the employees are located. At $70 million or 63% makes up for the vast majority of the fund, followed by our, excuse me, our transfers from various funds. These would include transfers from places like our internal service fund for IT, which would pay for those things like I mentioned with the IT software licensing. And then finally, we have fund balance at 15.6% or $15.6 million at 14%. And this is more than likely due to timing, given that it's a multi-year fund. This is probably insurance contributions from prior years, our transfers from prior years that are being spent in the current fiscal year that we're talking about. And then finally, we have other sources of revenue at $2.6 million or 2.4%. When we drill into the expenditures by category, other services and charges make up the vast majority of it, and once again, this is going to be paying for our insurance and all those other functions that are stored there. Almost all of them are some type of professional service. Beyond that, we have some transfers at 5.19%, and then relatively small pieces for capital outlay and reserve at less than 1% apiece, getting us back to that $109 million total. As we look at the PPA, and my general rule of thumb for distinguishing between the PPA and the MFA is that the PPA tends to be our outward-facing services, where you'd find things like the civic center, golf. MFA tends to be our inward-facing things, where you find our software licensing, insurance for employees, and so forth. But as we look at the budget by function, we can see that fairgrounds is the largest piece of that at just over $30.6 million or 44.5%. And this function primarily is composed of debt service for revenue bonds by the hotel-motel tax. The second-largest category is MAPS contracts at $13.3 million or 19.4%. And then golf represents the third-largest at $10.9 million or 15.9%, with performing arts bringing in about 10.9% of the budget, and then smaller portions being out there for economic development, natural gas, and the OCPPA Capital Reserve, and then our bids. So if we look at our revenues by source, a little bit more variety than we saw before, the vast majority of that is going to be 31% or $21.4 million coming from fund balance. Once again, a lot of that has to do with timing because of the multi-year nature of the trust, but $21.4 million of that number, 16.5 is dedicated for fairgrounds development. So that's by and large what the fund balance is being utilized for. If we look at our transfers from hotel-motel tax at 20.4% or $14 million, that represents our second-largest source, and then followed by a few smaller sources such as transfers from the general fund, transfers from various other funds. I forgot to mention the golf course revenue also represents about $14.4 million or 20% in total. So similar story to the MFA here in our expenditures by category, with a large piece of that going to our professional services or our other services and charges category at, right at $24.8 million or 36%. And that's going to include things such as our contract with SMG to manage the Cox Center and the Chesapeake Energy Arena, as well as other contracts with various bid improvement districts. The other piece of that's going to be for capital outlay at $19.6 million or 28%, and that mostly includes fairgrounds improvements or MAPS-related projects. A few smaller pieces there with debt service, transfers, and materials making up less than 20% of the rest of it, getting us back to our $68 million total. And with that, I know I've given you a lot of information in a very short period of time, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
All right. Questions for Christian? All right. Christian, thanks. All right. Do we have a motion on the MFA? Cast your votes. MFA passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Is there a motion on the PPA?
Move the items.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
Move the items.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on the EAT? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items. Subject to individual consideration.
All right. Is there any individual considerations to listen?
Mayor Gary Brooks is here this morning to do a presentation, talk to us a little bit about the First National Building on item BI.
Okay.
Mayor, I had a couple of things.
Okay. Gary, come on in. You can make your way up. Go ahead, Meg.
7S, 7W, 7AC, and 7AU.
AU?
Yeah, and actually one more. 7CN.
Okay. All right. Good morning, Gary.
Good morning.
We will need your name and address for the record.
Gary Brooks, 4 East Sheridan. I did hear the word "short presentation," so I'll do my best to keep the First National discussion as short as possible. We do have a fairly short animation I'd like to show first. The longer version's 12 minutes, so if you have any interest, we'll be happy to send that one to you. The problems that have plagued First National for the last 20 years have been well-publicized. It sold to California Real Estate Group, and for 20 years, they made promises, none of which were kept. And in September of 2015, the federal court took it back because the property was unable to pay its electric bill, despite the fact that everything around it is thriving. And our office would track somewhere around 100 projects going on in the court at any given time, from large MAPS projects down to restaurants. So the question is, how in the world does a 1.1 million-square-foot historical building like this sit vacant when everything around it's doing well? Jim Peric was tasked with the assignment of going and finding the best, largest redevelopers in the country to come to our city and redevelop First National. You would think it would be a fantastic time to do that. I mean, you've got $1 billion of public-supported amenities, no debt surrounding it. You've got the Great Hall, arguably one of the greatest pieces of art ever constructed in this region of the country. You've got an economy here that's doing well. You've got a national economy that's recovered, and you've got interest rates that are favorable for development. At the end of the day, Jim had five offers. One was from Oklahoma. That was mine. And the federal court and receiver decided that I was the best suitor, which gives you some idea of the lack of interest around the country in this building. September, I guess January the 11th of 2016, my partner and I signed the contract, and exactly 365 days later, on January the 11th, 2016, after about $2 million of due diligence trying to make sure that the building could actually handle and accommodate what our plan was, we closed and bought the building and began about a $40 million process of getting the building ready for construction. We've got about 15 months of work just to do with remediation and demolition. There's really nothing other than the historical stuff in the building that you want to keep. If you want to try to use a 95-year-old plumbing and mix that with 20, 18-year-old plumbing, it doesn't work very well. So we began the process of putting together our three-pronged project, and the reason we're here today is we are getting geared up to close the first of those three pieces, which is about a 675-space parking garage, two stories of what we call commercial retail, part of which will include an incubator, business incubator on the second floor, and it's basically the 1957 Center Building and the 1972 East Building. So we're not talking about the tower here today. The tower will be converted into 145 five-star hotel rooms and about 200 apartments and five different food and beverage outlets. So we are, we're working to get geared up to closing the garage and gallery piece, we call it, and that's the first phase. It's the reason that we're here. We've accumulated a great team, many of which worked on the Skirvin. There are 13 different entities, all of which have legal representatives that will be part of the garage and gallery closing. Hundreds of documents, thousands of pages, and it's not even the most difficult piece of the closing. So I'm here to answer any questions and try to keep it short. I can talk about it for hours if you're interested.
Yeah. Would the council be able to tour if individuals on the council wanted to go through the building and take a look at-
Giving a tour is my favorite thing to do. Allow about 90 minutes. It's quite hot in the building right now, so dress appropriately.
Okay. Encourage the council who's interested in going through the building to kind of see what Gary's- what Gary's vision is. And Jim, what exactly is this part of the presentation about?
Brent's gonna cover that for us this morning.
The item before you this morning is a memorandum agreement between the city, the Economic Development Trust, and Mr. Brooks's entity. And what we're doing today is, it supports the developers', it supports the developers' goal of getting private financing for the garage. It does not obligate the city to backstop the debt. The developer has to go out and create and start construction and finish the garage before the city fulfills its obligation on this project. On completion, the plan is for the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust to borrow funds and then loan those to Gary, so he can take out what they call the New Markets Tax Credit Leveraged Loan. Upon that, Gary will be required to pay a minimum annual debt service to pay that loan. This is a single taxpayer TIF, so we will have a covenant that will require him to pay a certain amount. He'll have to pay above and beyond what the debt service will be. The idea is, is the Economic Development Trust will, if we do have a borrowing, we will actually refinance that debt within the first 10 years of the project. Our next steps for this project are that Gary needs to complete his loans and begin construction on the garage. During that time, though, we will begin the TIF allocation process. We'll go to the advisory group. This is our standard typical allocation of funds, and we'll go to the TIF Review Committee, and then we'll come to the city council for a formal allocation of the TIF funds. If you recall, back in 2016, the city council created a TIF district that had a budget of $40 million, and then it also, based on adult form tax, and it also had a sales tax TIF of approximately $5 million. And we're gonna go through the exact same process. What we're doing here today, though, this agreement, is helping Gary go out and get the adequate financing for this project, so he can start. And then after we go through the allocation process, we'll have an economic development agreement, that will go back to the Economic Development Trust, and then we'll come back to this body for your approval. And then if there is a financing to occur, it will go through the normal process of the Economic Development Trust, and it will come back to this body, too. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Brent, I know this, the city's been interested in this property for a long, long time. Can you give us a little bit of the history on there? When did the city first start looking at figuring out a way we could get a better use into that tower?
Well, I think Kathy O'Connor, myself, and Mr. Couch have tried to work with the previous owners to try to help them with solutions, and then...
And the previous owners.
And the previous, before they had. And we've been working on that. And then when Gary came to us and was trying to acquire the property, we started the process to create the TIF district. And I think at that time, the council approved the budget of $45 million. We knew that this project was going to need a significant amount of public support in order to make it happen. And so we've been working on this, I would say, two years, at least.
Yeah, I would say, you know, perhaps with the exception of the State Capitol Building, it's probably the most iconic building in Oklahoma City. You know, it's certainly the one that, you know, was on the most postcards through the decades. And Gary didn't undersell that Great Hall. I mean, if you've walked in there, and even if you're not old enough to have known when it was a bank, it takes your breath away, and you can see the potential for this city making a, you know, a statement architecturally and having a marquee residence and hotel in the heart of the business district. Brent, what's, what's long been the problem with this facility? What, I mean, why hasn't, why didn't this happen 10 years ago or 20 years ago?
In my opinion, the problem was, is we had somebody in there with a reasonable low base, and it isn't reasonable low if you're gonna remodel it, but it was cash flowing for them. They had, they had enough revenue coming back on it, and they weren't getting a great return on it, but it was cash flowing for them with a 50% occupancy or whatever they had because of the base that they had in the building. And the first group that had it, or the two back, was a group of guys from New Jersey that, I think you met, you and I met with them once. And then the last people, the people from California, they, they didn't have, all they, they looked at was the, whether it was black at the end of each month, and they didn't really care about the building, they just cared about what that bottom line was.
It's also a really complicated building. The restrooms are between floors. I mean, it's not, in no way is it ADA compliant today. Very complicated project to redevelop.
So today, if someone were gonna construct a similar tower, we would, you know, one of the first questions is, you know, where the, where a car is gonna park? What's the parking? And I assume that requirement wasn't, wasn't there in 1930, when these papers came through?
Yeah, it's a little more complicated. There was, there was a garage, and then it was stripped off.
And the, and the parking is, has been the issue, though, for, for quite some time?
It's been a issue. There's, you know, there's environmental issues, there, what is the best use for the building? There was ADA issues, as Councilman Teller pointed out. Gary knows them better, probably, than I do, but it was, it's a, it's a very complicated building to get historic tax credits. For example, he had intentions of tearing down the middle building, but now is unable to do that because of the involvement of, of tax credits, and he's gonna have to keep that, the facade at least, on that building.
Brent, how would you say this is similar or different from the Skirvin Hotel, which we participated in, you know, 10 years ago?
I would say it's very similar. When you look at the capital stack that Gary's having to put together with New Markets Tax Credits, federal historic tax credits, looking at a 108 loan, all the different things, it's, it has a lot of similarities to the Skirvin Hotel project.
It's a lot of the similar tools, but the Skirvin was different, for we actually owned the building, and actually to this day, we still have an equity position, and we have the ground lease, or we have the ground ownership of the building. So we don't have ownership in this building, but we do have a piece of the ownership of the Skirvin.
Okay. Questions from council?
Just to comment.
Yeah.
I would say there's, you know, one of the reasons this has had problems is there's substantial risk associated with, with this. I mean, it's not an easy fix, and I appreciate Mr. Brooks taking on that risk. I don't want to scare people off. It's nothing unusual, but anytime you make this type of investment, there are substantial risks associated with it. And so we're not just handing over money, and it's gonna be a slam dunk. It's gonna require a lot of things fall into place. But at the same time, I think it's critical, because it's a big blight on the downtown area. If this isn't fixed, I don't think we can ever really move to that next level as far as a downtown business center, as long as this continues to remain vacant. And really, it's not an eyesore, per se, but it's certainly a big problem. It's, it's, there's a lot of analogies you could use, but until it's addressed, I think it's going to slow down the continued growth and development of the downtown area. So I appreciate Mr. Brooks's effort, and I want, from a business perspective, people to understand there's substantial risks associated with it. So, thank you.
How will, how will traffic on Park Avenue be affected by the construction of the parking
Stuart Chai's not in the room, is he? He would be much more qualified to answer that question than I am. We expect to bring 800 people to that corner in that building that are not there today 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So traffic will be impacted. Now, one of the things...
I'm talking about during construction, I mean, or, you know, the demolition or the construction of the parking garage.
Well...
Will you need to be in Park Avenue to do that?
Yeah, since my best friend owns the other three corners, I will be very careful to make sure I don't shut down Mr. Baffert's traffic flow on his buildings. Seriously, we, we have a big alley there that we plan on not only using for as much of the construction as possible, but J.E. Dunn is, is our main contractor, and they're building 499 Sheridan. They have a lot of experience with the city, they understand how important traffic flow is. Our plan is to not shut down traffic in any direction, other than maybe for a very short period of time, where we bring in a, a tower crane to set it in a certain portion of the garage. And then once we're finished, you know, the alley will become the major delivery, everything will happen through that alley. We understand you're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna bring trash out of a million-square-foot building on Park Avenue. You're just not gonna do that.
Right. Comments or questions?
I just, there was an open house two weeks ago, I guess. Gary invited the public to come down and look at the building, and I have never seen, I mean, people came in limousines, and it was just incredible to see the enthusiasm that people from all over the city have for this building. It's just a great, very similar to the Skirvin, I think. There's a great love for this building and that banking hall. People have so many memories of opening their first passbook there, you know. It's just a, it will be a wonderful experience to have this brought back to life.
Yeah.
Our firm office there from the 1960s up until 1997, and while I was there, I have so many fond memories of the building, so I'm excited about the project. Anything we can do to help, please let us know, and we're behind you 100%.
Yeah. Gary, I've talked with you enough to know your passion's in this project. It's not just, it's not just another project for you. So we appreciate your emotional buy-in at the same time, and you got an entire city, you know, pulling for you to get this done.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for the presentation, and Brent, thanks for answering the questions. All right. All right, Meg, you wanted to talk about some other items on the consent docket.
I did, Mayor. I'll try to be very brief. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Item 7, S1 through 6, is a series of our professional service agreements with various neighborhood associations. Northwest 10th Street, the Paseo Arts Association, the Homeless Alliance. I could go through the rest of them, but I just always like to mention these because they're such important partnerships for us. And these small commercial revitalization districts don't happen without, you know, really hard work of volunteer citizens. And so I always just like to mention the efforts that they're doing. Let's see. 7AC is the awarding of the contract for Red Andrews Park. We announced a couple of weeks ago that we were going out for that, and the contract is being awarded with this resolution, and construction begins in June of '17. And this is also another important partnership, Midtown Renaissance, and a number of other folks were involved in providing funding for this park. I want to thank Wiley specifically for all the work he did to make sure that this happens for us. 7AU is also a project that we've been working on for a very long time, and it's the sale of some property on the north side of Northwest 10th Street between Blackwelder and Ellison. And for those watching, you'll note that this is a section of 10th Street that was vacated a number of years ago to widen 10th Street. And the property on the north side has been vacant. This adjoins Class N Tanpan, which is continuing to thrive as an inner-city neighborhood, and the developer plans mixed-use development here of residential and commercial that I think will be very beneficial to the neighborhood. So I want to thank Dodson Custom Homes for taking on this project, and staff has done a fantastic job in seeing that that happens. And Jim, this may be one that I need somebody to get back to me on, but 7CN is our contract with the jail?
Yes.
And I was just curious, that number is roughly a million four. I was curious what it was last year.
I don't remember. It's been over two in the past. I don't remember. It's been coming down.
I know that it has been coming down, and I was just curious to see if we were able to lower it even further this year.
It is lower this year, but I'll get you that information. But it is a good time to highlight the work that's been done, you know, with what Vera Group is doing, you know, with the jail task force that the Chamber and Mr. Bennett have been initiating. And then the legislative, or not legislative committee, the judicial committee, previous work by Councilman White, now led by Councilman Stonecypher with Councilman Sead and Councilman Stone, and the work that they've done in trying to deal with indigency and not put people in jail because they can't pay. And more industry hearings, and of course, Judge James and LaShawn Thompson and Cindy Richard all working together to get that down. It's really made a difference. It really is a success. It's not a full success yet, but we're in that range, and there are less people being incarcerated on Oklahoma City charges today. Now, we're still working on the county, which is where most of those charges need to be worked through, and we're still working through that, but I'm really appreciative of the work done by the legislative, or the judicial committee and our staff.
And Mark is arranging a meeting between the sheriff, the police department, our staff, the judges. A brilliant idea, long overdue, and I appreciate your leadership on that. It's just a great idea, and I think it'll be very beneficial.
Let's just keep working on it.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments on the consent docket?
On BL and BM? So on BL is the Economic Development Trust is gonna set up with the Maps Park Foundation. It's $700,000 a year for the Maps Park, for the annual management fee and support for operations and management. What, so the source of the funds is what, for that $700,000?
General fund.
So it's a general fund that goes to the Economic Development Trust, then goes to the, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then on M, the, the funding of the Alliance for Economic Development, we're using use tax, TIF, and gold funds and general fund. Is that, is that the combination we've used in the past?
Yes, sir. That has not changed.
Not changed. Okay, thanks.
All right, we're voting on the consent docket. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. All right, on to the concurrence docket. Are there any individual considerations? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. That moves us on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 3 at 1100 South Meridian Avenue. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial, and it would become an I-1 light industrial district if approved. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? I don't think. There was no protest at the planning commission. They unanimously approved it. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 3801 Northwest 23rd Street. It's currently R1 single-family. We put into a new spud. And Ed, we have someone who has signed up to speak, and it looks like they are hoping it gets approved. Does not seem like it's someone who's protesting.
Good morning.
Good morning. Could I have your name and address for the record?
3805, no, it was, the place is 3801.
Okay.
Northwest 23rd, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Welcome to, and we'll need your name, too.
Flori Quiros.
Nice to see you. Ed, how do you want to proceed?
So you're, you're the applicant? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes, yes, I am.
So there was one protest letter, but I guess they haven't, nobody else is here to speak. Just for my own education, this, I guess this is to have a barber shop in a residential home?
No, this is going to be a barber shop, and I want to have offices next to the, in the same house, in the same building.
But it's in a home? It's in a house?
There used to be a house, now I transferred. Last time I came, and they approved everything, but they tell me I have to come back today to see everything is fine.
Okay, so nobody would be living in the house, it's just a barber shop?
They're going to be, yes, a barber shop.
And it can't be any other use other than a barber shop?
Yes.
And the parking is in the back of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Already been the, the plans, how I going to do it? They approved last time, but they tell me I have to come back today to see everything is fine.
Okay. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Flori. All right, we're on item 9A3. It's a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 1010 Northeast 7th Street. It's currently R2 medium-low density residential, as well as C3 community commercial, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. This is a part of the Page-Woodson development, and so we've seen the success with the Page-Woodson development, and this is just the continuation of the redevelopment of this particular area. So with that said, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 3714 Northwest 9th Street. It's currently I-1 light industrial and R1 single-family, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I went out and surveyed the property yesterday and had a couple of questions, and I've had no contact with the applicant, and Bob and I spoke... And Bob and I spoke beforehand. Did he agree to a continuance?
Yes, we've talked to him. He agreed to the two-week deferral. He's going to contact.
I'd like to make a motion in for a two-week deferral so I can look at this and we can get some questions answered.
All right. Would that be the 18th? Okay. Motion is to defer item 9A4 until July 18th. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward eight at 1425 Northwest 122nd Street. It's currently inside a planned unit development, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing to resume PUD 1134 to spud 980. It went before the planning commission without objection. There are no protests that I'm aware of, and it's for the construction of a commercial development, so I'd move for its approval.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 9A5? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is to close a drainage easement and street right away in Ward two near 55th and Miller. Ed?
Speak.
No.
I'm going to move for.
Well, someone is walking forward now. Good morning.
I'm Steve White, 1724 Northwest 179th in Edmond. The street portion is the north part of a street that was vacated probably 50 years ago. The balance on the south of the two lots is a drainage easement that was put in place a few years ago to build a drainage structure in there. I've met with the staff. We've negotiated everything out. Everybody's happy on changing this easement status. I think each of you probably have a email from the homeowners association out there. I've met with them several times. I've showed them everything. No secrets, photos of what we're going to build, the plans. And I've not had one person contact me against this. Glenn Garman, of course, has met with me several times to see what we're going to do and if we're going to change anything, which we're not. So I urge you to pass this.
I do have that email expressing support from the neighborhood, and I appreciate your work with them.
Well, it's easy if you start early and learn what's going on.
Yes. I move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9B1. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Thank you, sir.
I'm next.
Oh, you're next. Okay. You're on a roll. All right. Item 9B2 is back in Ward two. Ed, you want to lead us through this one?
Do you, do you have anything to say, Mr. White?
No, this is, the spud put three houses on this particular lot that had been zoned commercial. One of the things that neighbors were concerned about is having a mini storage or something terrible like that go in there. This is, to the north is all residential, to the south is what used to be the Chalk 11.
Ed, we do have someone who has signed up to speak.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
Someone signed up to speak about it.
Oh.
Yep.
All right. You can sit, you can sit close by in case we need you back up. Kathy Fitzhugh? Good morning, Kathy. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Kathy Fitzhugh. I'm at 2720 Northwest 55th Terrace. My property backs up along there. I was at some of the meetings where Mr. White was. Our concern is really the easement issue. Have we already voted on that, and it's a closed issue?
Let's see.
That's the only access to a sewer cleanout back behind my neighbor's house and to get to the utility route. There is a creek along there that they went through and concreted a few years ago, and now there's a fence around it. So back, they get access through there to get back there. I just, we just want to know that you can get in there. The city will be able to get in there.
Can you connect the dots here for us?
She's referencing the previous case. It's, these two are connected.
Uh huh.
And the utilities department has worked out the agreement, and he's closed the portions of the easement, so we still have access.
We still have access.
That's all we wanted to know.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds like you're good to go. Thanks, Kathy. All right. You going to make a motion on 9B2, Ed?
Yes, I'm in for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. 9C would allow a telecommunications company to build a tower in Ward one. Larry, you okay with this?
Yeah, this, the staff and.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Ward one. Messed up. Yeah.
Larry's voice had changed.
I know Ward three is big and everything happens in Ward three, but. Yes, staff and planning commission approval, so I move for approval.
Okay. The applicant has asked to speak, but it doesn't sound like that's going to be necessary. All right. Tracy Malone? All right. It looks like you're going to get what you want. Are you okay with this voting?
I'm not.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C2 is also in Ward one, and this would be a, deal with an automobile dealership on 39th Street. And James, we have someone who has signed up to speak.
Is it the applicant?
I believe so. Shiva?
Yes.
Yes. Are you the applicant in this case? Are you the person hoping to operate this business?
No.
All right. Well, come on up.
Shiva Houshman, 4417 Northwest 39th Street.
Okay. And what brings you down here today?
Well, I'm basically here to answer any questions or concerns you might have.
Okay. So you're the applicant. You're hoping to get this permit?
Absolutely.
Okay. James?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Got staff and planning commission approval again, so unless anybody else has questions, I'll move for approval.
Now, is there anyone here hoping to speak against this permit? All right. Looks like you're good to go.
Thank you.
James, you make a motion?
Yeah. Move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 9C2. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is an issue that was recommended for denial in Ward seven. The address is 6400 East Wilshire Boulevard. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would be put into a new PUD if approved. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April the 27th, the planning commission recommended denial of PUD 16 for the commission. Felt that this proposed commercial use was not in, was not compatible with the surrounding residential, excuse me, rural residential area. The applicant has not agreed to the following conditions in the PUD document, will need to be amended accordingly if approved. TEs 1, 2, 3, and 4. The applicant on last week requested indefinite deferral, but I cannot support the indefinite deferral, but the applicant representative is here to talk about that indefinite deferral. And I see the protester's representative is here. So if we can hear Mr. Mayor from the applicant representative, then the protest representative.
Thank you. Randy Grau, last name G-R-A-U, 6301 Waterford Boulevard, suite 320, 73118. Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Couch, Ms. Kersey, thank you very much. Unfortunately, the applicants, Matt and Lauren Toppens, could not be here this morning. They wish they could be. Unfortunately, Ms. Toppens and her five-month-old infant suffered some injuries yesterday in a fireworks accident. And they are recuperating and have some pretty significant burns. And I have provided at his request, Councilman Pettis, with documentary evidence of those injuries. So if any of you so desire to see those, you can check with Councilman Pettis. But that's why the applicants could not be here this morning. They are a family in Ward seven. Father, mother, three little girls. They're not developers. They do own this land, also in Ward seven. And essentially, what they want to do is establish a wedding chapel on this land. We are here to request an indefinite deferral. Going forward, we want to work in a cooperative fashion with neighbors. We have not had the opportunity to meet with the neighbors yet, and we know that there are several who are protesting. We believe that there's been miscommunication, non-communication, some things that could have been clarified. Also, the applicants are willing to make some concessions based on the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors, such as hours of operation, limitation on alcohol service to actually remove future development of another building towards the back of the property. This was originally on an agenda for two weeks ago. We requested a continuance because we had not had a chance to sit down with opposing counsel and talk about some of these concessions to seek clarification, and we wanted the opportunity to do that. We did that, and then we wanted to move forward with meeting with neighbors the second week of July. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen now, and so we seek an indefinite deferral. The reason for doing that is so, again, we can kind of go back to square one, that we can correct any procedural missteps, so that we can start to talk, address the concerns, move forward with insight, with input from the surrounding neighbors. Again, the applicants are Ward seven family. They want to do this in a cooperative fashion. And so I seek your help and your support in indefinite deferral so that we can take a step back and then hopefully come back to the council with a resolution that everybody can live with. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you. Our first speaker.
Mr. Mayor, if we can allow the protester's representative to speak on the indefinite deferral item, if that's okay?
He's the name listed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, go ahead. Mr. Roth, we'll need your name and address, please.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, council members. Jim Roth with the law firm of Phillips Mura, 101 North Robinson Avenue, 13th floor, Oklahoma City, 73102. I am here on behalf of 81 signed protesters that live in and around what I describe as the impact zone, as well as 14 of the 17 parcels within the legal protest zone. You have before you an application that has not been fully vetted by the neighbors because the applicant has pursued this without that type of coordination. We did not choose July 5th, and we did not choose June 20th, and quite frankly, we didn't choose April 27th. But we have over 15 neighbors here today that have taken their third day off of work and would be grateful for the chance for this item to be heard. There's some grave concerns about the notion of an indefinite deferral and the burden that that could put back on the neighborhood, the need to get back together and spend more money on counsel to restart the protest process that we think is an unfair burden to them. So we stand here today in hopes that you would hear the item, you could hear the concerns, you could hear our thoughts associated with the ordinance incompatibility, the plan's incompatibility, and quite frankly, the mitigation effort that hasn't gone far enough. I want to give you a little bit of the calendar update, if I might. Following the planning commission's unanimous denial on April 27th, the neighbors learned that the applicant was still insisting on moving forward to pursue approval. They reached out, retained our firm, and we got involved. I immediately reached out at that time to the attorney of record in the application. Mr. Love of Cheek and Falcone indicated they no longer were representing the applicant. I'd heard from city staff that another firm was, reached out to that attorney and asked for a chance to meet with the applicant on behalf of the neighbors. A few weeks went by. I had to reach back out and learn from that attorney, their firm had refused representation. I learned of a third attorney name, reached out, indicated from that person that they weren't taking the case. As June 20th was approaching, and we were the ones initiating the contact with the applicant, desperate to have a conversation, Mr. Grau appeared again on behalf of the original law firm. So I feel the firm's representation has continued in spite of the change of lawyers, and we are prepared to argue the case today. The neighbors are present, and we would be grateful for that opportunity.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do strongly believe that we should hear this case. Since day one, I asked the applicant to please, please meet with the surrounding property owners, meet with the neighbors. The applicant chose not to meet with the surrounding property owners and neighbors, but instead, the applicant chose to reach out to other people. My view on this would have been different had the applicant originally did what I requested, which was to please work with the surrounding property owners and neighbors and truly be good neighbors. The applicant made no effort until a few days ago, and I do believe we need to hear this case. Again, the planning commission recommended denial. The applicant has refused to accept the TEs, and there is 66% protest. So I do believe we should go ahead and hear this case.
Okay. We have eight people signed up. First is Elmer Nolan.
Excuse me? Yeah? Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate that I speak on their behalf? Because we may be able to dispense with a number of protesters that have individually signed up.
Sure. Yeah. Yes.
As a courtesy, should Mr. Grau be given a chance to offer his thoughts first?
Well, I think he has, so unless, at this point in time, you have something else to say. Sure. We're not prepared to defend the application today, and that's why we're requesting the indefinite deferral. Unfortunately, the applicants can't be here. Again, as Council, Councilman Pettis said, we'd like the opportunity, moving forward, to sit down and meet with the neighbors, to talk about some of these concessions that we've communicated to their counsel that we're willing to make. I can't change anything that happened previously. I've only been involved for a few weeks in this case, right before the first continuance, which is why it was requested, because we were trying to sit down and, and meet with Mr. Roth, who's a friend of mine. And so, again, there's going to definitely be a different tone and tenor moving forward, and we just like the opportunity to, again, to address these concerns, to talk about these changes, and to reach a resolution. So as far as presenting any case in support of the application, we're not prepared to do that today. Again, I have absolutely no problem listening to the protesters. I will take copious notes to discuss with my clients so that, again, moving forward, we can take any and all of these concerns seriously and address them. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We brought a PowerPoint that I believe has been loaded up. If it was helpful, we'll go ahead and begin there. So you have some information to follow along? Would that be appropriate? Also, I have some paper copies to pass.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor and council, thank you so much for the opportunity to present a few thoughts for your consideration regarding PUD 1640. I first wanted to say thank you for hearing this item. I can relate to the burden of a fiscal year agenda. When I saw we were on page 33, I thought it was an all-day affair, but I am grateful how efficient you moved through your fiscal year. I can recall years ago, across the street, I wished we had been as efficient. I want to say first a word of thoughts to Mr. Grau. We did have a good in-person meeting on the 23rd where we had a chance to hear some thoughts, and I was grateful for his time. Also wanted to extend wishes for speedy recovery to Mrs. Toppin's and her child, and wanted to accept their offer, as I heard it this morning, to start over. We believe that is in the best interest of the applicant, the neighborhood, city staff, the Planning Commission, and ultimately, council. I wanted to share some context as the neighborhood sees it. As you know, this area, under your own planning code, has base zoning of agricultural and residential district. It is pure AA in every direction from this parcel. I think because of that nature, there's a certain expectation that comes from the neighborhood, and they take great solace in phrases within your code, like AA districts are created, quote, "primarily to preserve agricultural purposes." They do allow low-intensity residential and some other uses, quote, "designed to encourage and protect agriculture uses on a permanent basis." And we quote certain essential commercial and institutional uses within this code being permitted. Again, so long as those uses must encourage and protect agricultural uses on a permanent basis. We have serious concern that PUD 1640, in the application form it is before you, does not, in fact, provide any essential commercial or institutional use to the area. It would not encourage and protect agricultural uses on a permanent basis, and we think for that reason, it fails the city ordinance. If you look at your comprehensive plan, and we are thankful for the city's deep effort to provide this type of development guide and footprint across your municipality, but if you look at the comprehensive plan, this entire section, Section 4 Township 12 North, Range 2 West, is a mix of only rural medium intensity and rural low-intensity areas. Rural medium intensity, or what the city plan refers to as RM, is described as large lot residential, two acres or more, plus, quote, "related commercial services," end quote. There are no expectations of urbanization or provision of water or sewer for these residents, and I tee the word "residents" because I think it's significant, according to page 50 of your plan. Rural low intensity, or what the plan refers to as RL, is described as large lot residential, five acres or more, plus related commercial services. Again, no expectation of urbanization or provision of water or sewer for those residents. Again, page 50. If comparing the parcel in question to the plan, it is more in sync with rural low intensity. It is bordered on the west by a 34-acre undeveloped tract, neighbor who is in opposition, and the east by a 55-acre tract, undeveloped land owned by the lady who, in fact, sold this applicant the property. She, of course, supports it. When you review the plan's development policies, a few problems are obvious for this proposed PUD. Density is a sensitivity for anything that departs from large acre home sites. This application, again, in its original form before you, would include up to 18,000 square feet of event space, paved parking for 125 cars, and commercial deliveries, and it suggests that any retail or commercial use be, quote, "clustered," end quote, at intersections and freeway interchanges along major arterials. I highlight those words because they're significant as you analyze the incompatibility that we believe is apparent with this PUD. This PUD proposes a 20-acre commercial development in the middle of this section, not near any intersection, and is, in fact, to be located on Willshire, which city staff describes in its report as a, quote, "minor arterial." So it is wrong for this area, it's proposed far from an intersection, and it is unsuited for this minor arterial that has no plans for expansion, widening, or even resurfacing anytime soon, because Willshire actually dead-ends just a further mile-plus to the east because of the North Canadian River. When you consider the, quote, "appropriateness of commercial uses" stated in the city's plan, the standard that those, quote, "do not negatively impact the rural residential character," we believe fails that standard as well, and more on those issues from our neighbors perhaps later in this meeting. Now, when you look at rural medium intensity in Chapter 2 of your development guide, we note that it states higher-density lots, such as one-acre home sites, can be appropriate if situated in a, quote, "transition area" between higher-density areas and rural areas while preserving environmentally sensitive areas. Those facts don't exist here. This PUD isn't even about greater housing density, although, quite frankly, many of the neighbors wish it was, such as one-acre sites in a rural medium rural area. There is no transition area between higher density and this PUD. It's a large-scale commercial purpose with rural houses on acreages or large undeveloped acres in every direction of it. If you'll look at the aerial map in the preceding slide, you'll see it highlighted. You'll see the rural medium intensity and the rural low intensity. I thought it might be helpful for you to have a chance to see this. I pulled it off the county assessor's website, so you could see the road improvements, the mess of areas of unimproved parcels in question. You could also see the home sites to the south on Northeast 71st Street, and you'll see the activities on the north. To the north, there are five and 10-acre home sites. To the south, there are some one-to-five-acre home sites. But this proposed PUD is nothing like the AA area, and it's probably disingenuous to even call it AA base zoning PUD. I believe it's a C3 project presented as a PUD in an AA area. If you look at your community commercial districts, or quite frankly, all the base zoning definitions within your code and plan, Chapter 59, Section 6200.1, and the purpose statements, a review of these base zoning, it would appear that community commercial district, or what's referred to as C3, is the accurate city code for this planned 20-acre development. This PUD 1640 better fits as C3 because it, quote, "would serve a larger trade area than the surrounding residential neighborhoods." And yet it provides zero, quote, "essential commercial services," as I shared with you, your plan for AA suggests would only be appropriate. This is why these neighbors fear the impacts that have been discussed by the Planning Commissioners and cited in the staff report. This is not even a mixed-use project, but rather, commercial-only. There is no residential aspects to it. Its hours would be from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week, and it's potentially dangerous, loud, and a disruptive PUD. Now, I do recognize that applicant or council must realize the very obvious incompatibility of C3 to this otherwise quiet, large-lot rural residential area. And so I imagine they realize their odds were better to pursue it as a PUD. But the Planning Commissioners, who you have entrusted to analyze these issues with the help of exceptional staff, realize that it was not worthy of approval as a PUD. I am hopeful that because of nearly unanimous neighbors and landowners around this PUD in up-and-down Willshire and Air Depot, that the city council will likewise deny PUD 1640 for its failure to protect the surrounding AA area, recognize that it does not provide, quote, "certain essential commercial and institutional uses," and honestly recognize that no matter whether it's called a C3 application, or a PUD in AA, or anything else, it's bad for AA and the people who've called this area home for years and generations. This is, in fact, a commercial proposal by a non-resident business owner. In fact, you'll notice it's in the name of an LLC. Now, standards for an Oklahoma City PUD, again, according to your code and plan, quote, "The PUD typically includes multiple tracks that can be regulated under different base zoning districts and includes significant modifications to conventional zoning and land use regulations." Again, not the case here. This application only involves AA base zoning for the parcel at issue, and only AA surrounds it, which is why a C3, or rather, more accurate rezoning effort, would have significant and obvious incompatibilities with this AA neighborhood. In fact, our research shows that of the 12 similar wedding chapel slash event center complexes in existence in Oklahoma City, none, not one, has been allowed in purely AA zoning areas, and this shouldn't be allowed either. You'll see from the map we provided in this presentation that most all of these are along major arterials of four or more lanes to accommodate crowds and traffic. Now, it can be described as a wedding chapel, but in conversations with the applicant, she has intentions of running corporate retreats, business activities from the entire hours of 6:00 to 2:00 AM. Later, she indicated she'd shut off events by midnight and alcohol service by 11:00, and I'll share more thoughts on that later. But if you look at the existing event centers who have classifications as PUD or other base zoning districts, you'll notice North Council Road by 122nd, Eastern Avenue near Hefner, Southwest 59th in the intersection with Santa Fe, South 104th and Western in a strip mall with plenty of parking. So only this proposed event center complex and wedding chapel would be placed in an AA-zone-based district with no other base zoning classifications other than AA anywhere around it. That's the purpose often of a PUD, aggregating conflicting or different base zoning issues. All other similar event centers were at least R1, with most having existing commercial or industrial zoning adjacent, not PUD 1640. I looked at a few nearby facilities. I looked at Cole's Garden. I looked at the new Montiano Event Center on Eastern. None of those have proposed 20-hours, seven-days-a-week operation. And again, all of those are on four-lane or larger section-line major arterials. What's more, and this is, I believe, it's significant you'll hear from the neighbors, these existing event centers located around arterials described as major, not minor, also are served by city water, and they're also served by public safety services of quicker response than this event center's location would allow on rural East Willshire. Now, that's not to say that PUDs or SPUDs aren't ever appropriate. Our research indicated there are three attempts in the last six years within a two-mile radius of this parcel. You'll see from this list that two were approved and one was withdrawn. Oklahoma City SPUD 679 at 5220 East Willshire was approved on November 13, 2012, and I'm quoting from the staff report, "Purpose: To permit a sculpture studio and future residence on a two-acre AA tract which is consistent with the rural low and medium intensity of your plan. It can't be larger than 4,800 square feet, it can have no signage, and it must have a gravel drive." OKC SPUD 881 at 7513 Newberry Road, approved March 24, 2016, staff report, quote, "Purpose: To allow for a single-family residential use along with landscape contracting business on a five-acre tract, in AA and consistent with rural low intensity. AA rules apply, and, quote, 'traffic generated is not considered to be substantially greater than existing uses.'" By the time that item was approved in 2016, your comprehensive plan was in place, and it insisted on that type of incompatibility analysis on traffic. More recently, OKC PUD 1639 at East Willshire and Coal Train was also proposed to be a wedding chapel. This is the issue that I actually became more aware of, because it's within a half-mile of my own residence. I and a number of neighbors were made aware of it because that applicant, to her credit, knocked on doors and talked to people before she filed the application with the Planning Commission. Once the plan was circulated with the legal notice, neighbors grew more concerned about some of its issues, because the two parcels to be aggregated within the PUD, one was within a floodway where she proposed building a peered 2,000-square-foot wedding chapel. At the request of the Planning Commission, a number of neighbors agreed to meet with the applicant prior to Planning Commission decision. We did at Rudy Construction in Northeast 63rd one night, and my credit goes to Planning Commissioner Cooper and Planning Commissioner Powers, who also attended. Attorney David Box, on behalf of the application, I thought did an excellent job of allowing for a conversation between the applicant and the neighbors. But the concerns were genuine, and the concerns were significant, and the worry of traffic at that otherwise difficult, visible, weird intersection. That's a correction section, so Coal Train actually jogs over on Willshire and causes some traffic issues in the past. To her credit, that applicant slept on it that night, and the next morning agreed to withdraw it out of respect for her neighbors. I think there's a significant difference here. The applicant in PUD 1639 lived on the property, had neighbors the day after the decision, had a sense, I think, of greater responsibility. Not the case with this for-profit business. Residents may live in Ward 7, but three miles away is not the same as noise and lights and drunk driving effect that those who actually live around it worry about. And perhaps that is why I had to reach out, trying to build a bridge between the neighbors and the applicant. I still hope that that can be possible going forward. If you look at the legal protest zone, and perhaps your packet included this information, but I thought it might be helpful to see it. I represent the families in blue. The 14 of 17 parcels technically in opposition within the legal protest zone. I also represent 63 other families and individuals in and around the area who reside in what I call this impact zone. Their homes are nearby, their families commute along Willshire, Sooner and Air Depot, they have agricultural property, and they worry about this highly vulnerable aquifer. But of these legal protestors, most all of them actually reside adjacent to this proposed event center complex, as you saw from the previous aerial. These are their homes, many of them from more than one generation. Some don't even water their lawns because they worry about the aquifer and their water supply. All enjoy the natural area and the solitude that comes from living in this AA area of Oklahoma City, and they have their own longstanding investments here. But please know, all are not opposed to development of this land. They are genuine about that, but they have grave concerns about this proposed commercial PUD by non-residents running a 20-hour-a-day business seven days a week with noise, lights, traffic, road dangers, water depletion at rates before unseen in this area, and fire dangers from hundreds of guests perhaps every day at raucous activities like weddings. Now, there are a number of central neighbor concerns. I will leave most of that for you to hear from the neighbors themselves, but I wanted to highlight a few, so you have in this document a leave behind for your consideration. Homes in this area are zoned AA with mostly single-family home on five or more acres. As staff reports, the character of the area is rural residential, and that is true, but this event complex is not. You will see a number of issues associated with essentially the interruption of quiet enjoyment that all residents hope to have within their homes. Next, you'll see staff referring to the allowed speed limit on East Willshire being 55 miles an hour, and a description of the topographical area profile of Willshire going from low to high. Willshire is described as a minor arterial in the rural medium LUTA. Drunk driving is a serious risk due to this commercial event center, and something that people who live around this area don't have a choice other than their commute along Willshire or other section-line roads. There is a stop sign at Willshire and Sooner. Can you imagine the effect of 50 to 125 cars leaving an event at one time? What that does to this otherwise rural two-lane road? When I met with the applicant and her attorney, she offered a few possible revisions, which sadly do not go far enough to mitigate, as the comprehensive plan might suggest is promised to citizens, to lessen the impacts from this business. Although she still wanted to operate seven days a week from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, she suggested just developing the 6,000-square-foot Phase 1 with this PUD, but still maintaining 125 parking spaces for attendance of over 200-plus people. When I asked if the PUD could then be worded to prohibit Phase 2, that second 12,000-square-feet building, she refused and said she would just agree to pursue that separately later. We worry that if the city were to agree to 6,000, knowing 12,000 was potential with her original vision, that before long, this will be at 18,000. And once that foot is in the door, we're afraid the neighbors' impact is going to be dramatic and unprecedented. When I expressed the neighbors' worry about late events with alcohol and drunk drivers on rural two-lane roads, she offered to cut off events at midnight with alcohol service ending at 11:00, but still allow cleanup and departures to occur until 2:00 AMs. Now, I shared with her, perhaps my family is unique, but my cousins and uncles, when told to leave a wedding, go to the parking lot, and still continue noise and activity. So there's genuine worry from the neighbors. I asked her what her security plan was. I asked her what her protocol was for ending the events at either 2:00, midnight, or alcohol at 11:00, and she had none. Now, a young mother of children obviously has other priorities. If you have a 20-hour operation, I think the business plan ought to include staffing levels, that people could have some sense of accountability or responsibility. There's no plan for a traffic monitor letting cars out onto Willshire, there's no plan for asking guests to leave at a timely hour, there's no plan to have somebody monitoring the noise if the band were to move outside. So I asked her about those issues, and her answer was, perhaps recent college graduates that are between jobs, she could have show up near the end of events. That just is not a sufficient, thought-out approach to a potentially 18,000-square-foot event center 27, excuse me, seven days a week. Other concerns rightly focus on the aquifer. These residents who have built homes and have wells supplying service to their families know they live in a highly vulnerable aquifer, as your city plan and staff report indicates. They take steps every day to limit water. As I shared with you, and I think you've received some emails, they often forego landscape issues and watering outside of their home because they worry about depletion. When I asked if she would consider extending the water line, as staff reports suggested as a technical requirement, she said no. When I shared that neighbors who have recently been affected by wildfires in the area have real concern about the amount of activity, attendance, and traffic on those 20 acres every day of the week, with some outdoor smokers at weddings and other issues with events that apparently would not be monitored, she indicated she might build a pond and install a dry hydrant to assist the fire response, which is in an area considered low and rural. Now, in my previous life as a county commissioner, I recall working with the town of Lake Aluma to install a dry hydrant system. Now, it's a big, beautiful, established lake, and it was not easy, and it took two years, and it's not cheap. It's very expensive. You hope it helps, but quite honestly, if you're not willing to extend the city water line, I'm guessing you probably are not going to be willing to incur the expense associated with a sufficient dry hydrant system to keep that area safe from wildfires. with a sufficient dry hydrant system to keep that area safe from wildfires. Staff report required extension of the water main from Sooner and Wilshire. Now, there's been some email traffic from a previous attorney about possibly waiving that because her attorney at the time was alleging it's too far from the water main, meaning it's too far from the intersection. I think that makes the neighbors' concerns case, quite honestly. Because if you are saying only a central commercial services in an R M. or R L. area could be at intersections, you wouldn't be too far from water services. She's picked a rural, remote area and would like to use the remoteness as an excuse to avoid extending the water line. And I will share with you, her comment to me was, there are homes in that area bigger than six thousand square feet. Now, I can't account for mischievous children, but I guarantee they aren't flushing the toilet two hundred times a night at an event, and they're not doing landscaping with irrigation around it. And it's not the same to say that a six-thousand-square-foot home would have the same environmental, ecological, and aquifer impacts of an event center with activities throughout the day. The area is described as an upland forest with fire dangers and wildfire risk. Sadly, the applicant clear-cut a good portion of the parcel already. The aerial that I showed you from the assessor's office is an old picture. If you used a drone or flew over it today, you'd see red dirt. Much of the middle has been scraped. So now you fall back into your mitigation plan for an upland forest with things being replanted. Now, if you read the application and the master plan submitted, we recognize it has a logo, some pictures from the Internet, and a small rendering, but there really are no genuine renderings about how to mitigate issues like upland forest restoration, how much setback is required for perhaps a green screen, so to speak, with trees, particularly for those neighbors on Northeast Seventy-first Street if she were allowed to do Phase Two. So the comprehensive plan's hierarchy for mitigation reads, one, avoidance and minimization, not possible, it's been clear-cut. Two, restoration, we are hopeful, but the plan doesn't speak to it. Three, offset. Yet, as the staff report points out, the P U D make no indication which areas will have tree preservation or replanting as your comprehensive plan recommends. Fire service is deemed rural response, but in the area deemed longer than rural response. That is a genuine concern for people who are seated behind me that have recently experienced a wildfire, one gentleman who had to rebuild from losing his home. Hours of operation, as I mentioned, a number of neighbors are here to share their personal perspectives. I'm thankful that they are, but quite frankly, even eighteen hours a day, seven days a week, is disruptive to this residential or otherwise agricultural area. Nineteen hours a day of alcohol service potentially. She has agreed to not pursue an able license, but to rely on caterers with license. That actually worries me in the sense that caterers are incentivized to sell as much booze as possible because there's quite a markup on their profitability. So I'm not sure the business plan has been fully thought through in terms of that modest reduction of three hours of alcohol service and what it would do to the plan. Oklahoma City doesn't need this event center at this location. The neighborhood certainly doesn't need this event center at this location. There is no, quote, necessity to it, and it certainly isn't, quote, essential as your plan requires. If this project is built at either six thousand or eighteen thousand square feet as proposed, it impacts will last forever to the detriment of these surrounding neighbors who certainly didn't ask for it. If built, only nearby residents will be left to monitor whether ordinances are followed. When an event such as a wedding is too loud, or neighbors' only option is to suffer through it, report it to the city after the fact, or worse yet, perhaps disrupt the wedding and ask them to disperse. Scenarios such as this are not ideal for anyone involved, which is why I think the incompatibility is so glaring on its face that we would also like the applicant to start over. I would be glad to host an additional meeting, like the one I initiated with her and her council, with a broader group of neighbors. But we feel best in that conversation if the slate is, in fact, clean. We would ask that you deny the application, as your planning commission did unanimously, and really reset what should have been Step One, neighborhood coordination. We'd like her plan to be revised beyond that at that point so that staff has a chance to weigh it again, so that your appointed planning commissioners have a chance to weigh it again before being forced to a decision at this council. Oklahoma City, the plan OKC rightly suggests this proposed P U D conflicts with existing uses, and since, as I pointed out, so much of the land around it in two directions is undeveloped, conflicts with potential uses. One of those owners is here today. Gross compatibility is measured by, one, traffic, differences caused by proposed projects; two, building scale and site design, significant differences between height and scale; and three, operational impacts like noise, outdoor, lights, et cetera, that negatively impact neighbors. This P U D fails in all those directions. On June twenty-third, when I had a chance to meet with the application, the applicant, I asked her, give us a sense of the buildings. How do you cite them? How do you follow the plan's recommendations of how to minimize effect? She indicated it would be a one-story building, but at its peak would be thirty-four feet tall. There are no structures within that section that are thirty-four feet tall, not even barns. And at the center of that section parcel, that is a high point. I'm not sure how you design around that. I'm not sure what trees provide enough insulation so that the rural character is preserved as promised in the code and the plan. So I would share with you in conclusion, this P U D is grossly incompatible with your plan, with your ordinance, with even staff's report. It's, and should be denied. Even if you think it's just highly incompatible and that mitigation effort should be taken. To date, the applicant's desire does not show, to me, certainly to the satisfaction of the neighbors, sufficient mitigation to eliminate these risks that would impact them forever. I would be glad to take any questions, and I'm thankful that on this long agenda day that you've been kind enough to allow us to be heard, we did agree to the continuance on June twentieth. And we did that so that we could have a conversation, again, that we initiated, but with the minimal, modest revisions that she indicated she was willing to consider. The neighborhood unanimously directed me, as their attorney, to please ask you to deny this, because that's the only leverage we feel would actually allow this process to restart. Now, just a word of concern about the indefinite deferral, as I understand it.
Yes.
This would allow the applicant to come back before you at any time by paying half the fee for notice, and that application could be begin before you unchanged. But as I further understand it, the protesters would have to start over. They'd have to incur expense. They'd have to get, again, another petition associated with exceeding the fifty percent threshold. We don't feel that is fair. The applicant has driven this issue to the exclusion of the neighbors, and the thought that we have to monitor our city agendas going forward, and they would have to incur that expense, we feel is not fair at this juncture. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any questions from the council?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, the planning commission recommended denial. The applicant has not agreed to the staff T Es. With that said, I move for the denial.
Okay. The motion is for denial. Is there a second?
No.
Okay. This will be voting for denial. It's approved unanimously. Okay. Next item is Item E, a public hearing on proposed amendments to ordinances related to animals. And we have two individuals. We'll wait just a second, and then we have two individuals signed up. Before we have the two individuals come up to speak, James, do you need to preview your proposal?
I can.
Okay. Let James go ahead and propose.
Yeah, I think the first thing we're going to end up voting on is the amendment that I proposed. Essentially, it's going to keep the ordinance the same. The only thing that will change in the existing ordinance is that it takes out the language that allows the exception for people just complaining about cats. So, but it will leave in the exception for people who bring in the cats, that they still have a say in whether or not they're returned. So that's, that's the, what the ordinance, or that's what the amendment that I'm proposing is.
Okay. Any comments from council on it?
So, James, clarify for me. If we approve this amendment, it really doesn't change the ordinance at all. Is that...
It barely changes it. I think it takes out a couple words and changes a couple words, but it, at the heart of it, no, it doesn't.
So it...
Waters it down?
It doesn't accomplish, if you, if I understood it, what staff is trying to achieve. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, you're right there. And I know that a lot of the discussion is all about the T N R. program and whether or not it works. And we do have a T N R. program, and I know that people from the Humane Society and from our animal welfare would say it's a modified T N R. program. But I don't, I'm not sitting here arguing that the T N R. program doesn't work. I think that it's a strange logical jump that I struggle to make the argument to, that it does work. But, but I think that some of the numbers that they said, they have, the numbers that we want to go down have gone down, the numbers that we want to go up have gone up. They just haven't gone as, as extreme as some of the other cities that have done the same thing. So I, I just am basing it solely on the fact that there are trappers who spend their time, energy, and money doing it, and we're essentially taking their ability to tell our staff that they don't want them returned. So that's, that's my main concern.
We have a couple of people who've signed up to speak.
So just to clarify, so if a trapper goes to the time, energy, and expense of bringing the cat, and they don't want it returned, then it wouldn't be returned? Is that what the amendment?
Yep.
Yes, because that's what, that's how our ordinance reads now.
Okay.
Okay. Let's bring up two people that have signed up to speak. Claudia Ayers. I'll ask people that come up to speak to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Good morning, Claudia.
I know, sir. I tried to make it short. And Mr. Greiner, I could barely hear what you said. Yeah, so please, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to say, today is the day. It has been quite an eye-opening opener to watch this elected governing body in operation. My hopes are not high today, since the mayor announced the OKC shelter would become a no-kill shelter at the last meeting before there was even a public hearing on the situation. What a revealing statement that was to me. When I mentioned the shelter would respond, would not respond to kittens on the roof at Baptist Hospital, the mayor looked at John Gary and made the comment, but John, you can't go on private property, right? And John said, right. And yet now you are considering returning unwanted, unfeline leukemia-checked cats to private properties. Is that not an invasion of citizens' rights? The whole ordinance procedure just has not added up to me. I truly hope that today's decision will be based on the rights of citizens and the humane consideration of the cats, and not based on any contributors of any of your all's campaigns' desires. I thank you all for your time. I kept it short. You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Samantha Burnett. I'm the Vice President of Operations for the Central Oklahoma Humane Society, five-two-two-eight, class in circle, seven-three-one-one-eight. Good morning. Historically, many shelters have routinely admitted more healthy cats than could be placed in adoptive homes. While the intention behind this practice has been to protect both cats and communities, the result has been chronically overcrowded shelters and the deaths of many millions of cats. At one time, this was seen as sadly inescapable. However, new research and innovative programs show us that there are humane and cost-effective alternatives to this traditional approach. Our community cat ordinance in place is written to allow for two exceptions on why a cat may not be able to be returned. Oklahoma City Animal Welfare has requested Exception A. be removed from the ordinance. OK Humane supports this request. The change is needed in order for a significant impact to be achieved, and no other successful city has been found to have this exception in their ordinance. The proposed change suggested by Councilman Greiner adds Exception A. back in and will actually cause this morning's upcoming vote to be moot as it will bring no change to the ordinance. Last year, OK Humane staff performed fifteen thousand spay-and-neuter surgeries, of which twenty-two hundred of those were free-roaming community cats. Seventy percent of those cats were brought to our clinic by private citizens, people who saw the cats in their neighborhoods and just wanted to ensure that they did not multiply. In addition to those twenty-two hundred cats, Oklahoma City Animal Welfare saw an additional, nearly seven thousand cats, enter their doors in twenty sixteen, and then euthanized forty percent of the adults, the majority of whom were candidates for the community cat program. They did the same thing in twenty fifteen, and every year before that, with the euthanasia number being higher. Without the change to current ordinance as originally requested by Oklahoma City Animal Welfare, there will be no positive change on this number, nor will OK Humane fund a community cat coordinator. Our sister cities have implemented effective, proven community cat programs and are achieving higher and higher save rates. The City of Oklahoma City is falling behind. We will not reach our publicly stated goal of seventy-five percent save rate without a robust community cat program as part of a holistic approach, allowing our shelter to focus on positive, lifesaving programs that account for the needs of cats and people in our community. I'm requesting that the city council take a further look at the ordinance before voting. I appreciate your time and can answer any questions.
Okay, so the Humane Society is speaking against the amendment?
Against the amendment.
And is speaking for the ordinance as originally...
As originally requested by Animal Welfare.
Are there questions for Samantha?
Will, will we be tracking statistics so that we can tell whether or not this is actually working?
Yes.
Do we have the metrics available, Bob, and we can, or John, and we can measure this?
Yes. We're already tracking the program, but we'll continue to track it, yes, and be able to report back.
So if it were to pass, we'll be able to monitor over the course of the next couple of years how this works, and if it doesn't work, as we hope, we could make a change again?
Yes.
Okay.
And has it worked with the exception in there?
Our numbers have gone down, but they haven't gone down like we'd hoped they would.
Right. Okay.
Have you, have you, I'm sorry, have you read the opinion of PETA which opposes this ordinance?
I have not read the full opinion of PETA. I do understand that they would most likely argue against it because of the possibility of an animal maybe in the future coming to harm, on the possibility of it.
I think their arguments center around that it could actually be more humane, in some cases, for the shelter to accept all cats, and in some cases euthanize, as opposed to put them back in an environment where they would be subject to, to other animals, to disease. And then they cite data from the CDC talking about the spread of disease, both to humans, exposure of humans to rabies, that this is the primary carrier of rabies to humans, to children, to, and then among, among other animals.
Cats are not a primary vector for rabies towards humans. These cats that are coming into the city shelter that would be candidates for the program are already doing well where they're at. So there may be someone carrying... So there may be someone caring for them. We know that we have returned people's personal pets because cats are a little bit more loosely owned and are kept outside. So I would like to have my cat back if it accidentally ended up at the city shelter. But the cats are doing well, they're healthy, and they wouldn't be returned to an area that we understood to be dangerous. So the concerns, while valid, and there are bad things that happen, we have so many community cats in within Oklahoma City, upwards to probably about 900,000 based on a formula by Dr. Julie Levy, that this program will then drop the number of cats within the community.
Any other comments or questions for the Humane Society?
Your honor, it's, I was leaning towards supporting Councilman Griner's proposal last week, but then I have received additional information that does suggest that by doing that, we've not really made any significant changes in our current ordinances related to these animals. So I am willing to go forward with the proposal without Councilman Griner's amendment for one year as Councilwoman Sauer has suggested that. A year from now, if we could get statistics to see if this change in the ordinance has resulted in any reduction in the number of cats that are in the neighborhoods. So that's my point. And Bob, I appreciate you letting us know that you could provide that information to us a year from now and see if this proposal does have an impact. And if not, well, then we would go back and adopt Councilman Griner's amendment. Thank you.
Yeah, Larry?
If somebody could speak to this, I'd really appreciate it. I happen to be a property owner. Do I have any say in this whole thing and any rights? I may not want the cat back. And it seems to me everything is being focused on the cat. And where's the, is there a balance here that I'm missing?
There is a balance, but I saw Mr. Teener stand up. You want to go first?
If you're a property owner and you report to us that you have some sense that the cat is in danger if we were to return it, we won't return that cat.
Well, the danger is I just don't want it. I haven't, I've had some neighbors who have been very, very emotional in saying that they have stray cats. This was before the community cat nomenclature got to us. They've had stray cats who are impacting negatively their ability to maintain their property, to plant their flowers. They've tried all types of remedies to make their property unattractive to these cats, and the cats seem to come anyway. That's the people that I'm talking to.
Well, if we ran into that situation, we would work with those individuals. This return is really in the radius of a mile, so it's not directly back to their property. But we, our superintendent would be willing to work with people that have an extreme situation, you know, if the cat's damaging property, those types of things. I mean, we need to be flexible, we understand that, and we would do that.
It's important to note that there is a documented vacuum effect. So when cats are trapped and removed, they will most likely be, the spaces will come back in with cats that move into the area, reproduction, or potentially animals that are lost or abandoned. So there is a resource there, most likely, whether or not a human is providing it, and the cats will continue to show up, which approximately 2% of them are only spayed and neutered, whereas people's personal pets, upwards to 80%, will be spayed or neutered. So we know where our population crisis is coming from.
Okay. Any other questions for Samantha?
About four years ago, there was a New York Times article that talked about that these cats are actually a major, they kill like 2.3 billion birds and 12 billion mammals. I mean, what, any thoughts?
No, that was a very popular article that came out and was actually disproven. It was not, the information that was used for that study was not properly put forward, and there weren't very many controls. I mean, if that's what cats were doing in our country, we would have no mammals or birds.
Okay.
So it was disproven by several other studies and individuals that came out afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Samantha, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, come on up. And Claudia, you can be next.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Sure.
My name is Jack, middle initial E, last name White, and I am a resident of Oklahoma City on 3425 Northwest 51st Street in Ward Two. I am certainly not against cats. Thirty-one years ago, when I married this lovely lady in yellow, she had Morris the cat. And I was a trust banker with the Liberty National Bank at the time, and I would come home in the evenings, Morris the cat would jump on me, and I would have cat hair all over my suit. Did I ever complain? I never complained. If I may read to you from Solano Ferals Org, which is an organization in California.
Yeah, if you could keep it brief, I'm trying to limit people to three minutes.
I will certainly try to do that.
All right, thank you.
Feral cats have an average of 1.4 litters per year with an average of 3.5 live births in each litter. That equals 4.9 kittens per year per female feral cat. Indeed, a pair of breeding cats and their offspring can produce 420,000 kittens over a seven-year period. Now, we have neighbors on different corners of our properties, both feed stray cats. I'm not going to argue between the difference of a stray cat and a feral cat, there is a difference. But at any rate, they cross our yard. My wife is a master gardener and does a super job of maintaining flowers and beds in the yard. These cats pass through, they produce feces on our yard and our beds. At the very least, I think an owner of a property which has stray or feral cats should be authorized to trap that cat and euthanize the cat. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Jack. All right, Claudia?
By the way, I was director of finance for the state of Oklahoma under Governor Walters. I was a trust banker. I understand finances, and trapping and euthanizing is a heck of a lot cheaper on society than taking them to some other place. I have a good friend who owns a condominium unit on 41st Street. They had two residents that fed stray cats. They fined them $620 per resident if they fed those cats. They stopped feeding them.
Thanks, Jack. All right, Claudia?
Sir, about three years ago, I fell out of a tree and shattered my hip, okay? So I was out of commission for quite a while, which put me out of trapping on the north side of Ova Holser. The gentleman who was said he would trap there did not. An older woman there knew I had broken my hip, left me alone for several months, close to a year. And she called me, and she said, "Claudia, are you doing any better?" And I said, "Yes, I'm back to doing everything." She said, "I need your help." And I said, "What's wrong, Vonda?" And she said, "I'm covered with cats." Okay? And so I went over there, started trapping. I've been out of commission for about nine months to a year. I trapped 53 cats on her property. Thirty of them were kittens, okay? This is, you're saying, one year? This is what can happen if you give it a one-year test. It gets out of control that quick. And how did the Oklahoma City Animal Shelter respond to this? Oh, they had ordered from me the name and number of this woman. I gave it to them. She was a right-wing Christian conservative. By the way, dying at that time, I did not know it. Crystal Wise from the Oklahoma City Animal Shelter called her, tried to strong-arm this sweet little old lady into returning, fixing to returning those cats. Vonda, God bless her, all 100 pounds of her, stood her ground and said, "No." She called me, she was livid with what type of people she dealt with at the shelter. And they're sitting there saying they'll work with property owners? I know different.
All right, thanks.
Okay?
Thanks, Claudia.
Now, hold on. Teener, who are these trappers you have out there?
Claudia, Claudia, this is not appropriate.
Okay.
I know, I know it means a lot to you, but thanks for coming down. All right.
By the way, for the last five years, all new cats at Ova Holser have been trapped, taken to the shelter to not be returned. That's why the cats are down. And guess what? We have rabbits coming back.
Okay. James, my problem with your amendment is we've had such a good relationship with Humane Society, and, you know, they're asking for additional help, and I'm just, I'm willing to give it to them. I mean, I just think we've come so far and...
Yeah, well, and, you know, I went to a meeting at the, at the animal shelter with, and John Gary said something at the meeting that has resonated with me this whole time, is that we, we all want the same thing. We all want less cats. We all want less unwanted cats. We all want less dumped cats. We all want less property damage from the cats. I mean, and so there's just a disagreement on how we get there and, and I feel like with this whole TNR thing, there still needs to be more education on it because they've somewhat convinced me, but I still struggle to actually make that argument and actually believe it myself. So that's just kind of where I am. So it could certainly work, though.
All right, so you made a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to leave the exception in for people to, that bring in the cats, that they can still say to not return them.
All right, is there a second on that motion?
I'm not sure I follow that. Are you withdrawing your amendment?
No?
No. Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Can I just ask, it seems like Bob was saying the same thing that James is saying. I mean, if, if somebody brings it in and they say they don't want it returned, then you'll work with them?
Well, I mean, anytime we have someone in that is, has serious concerns, like Councilman McAtee talked about, I mean, the superintendent will talk to them and see if we can work out a solution. But that's going to be on a case-by-case basis. It won't be every time. You know, I've looked at, I'm not an animal expert by any means, but, you know, I would have proposed this, but I didn't think it was going to help the city. And so we'll just have to, we'll just have to work through that. When people come in and they've had a lot of problems with the cat, we'll have to, we'll have to decide how we're going to deal with it.
And just to clarify, so this is a one-year experiment that we're going to revisit in a year? Is that what we're...
Well, first, we have to vote on the amendment, whether that's going to be a part of it.
I understand, but I mean...
And then if the amendment does not pass, then we'll vote on the ordinance as proposed. I like David's idea to look at that ordinance for a year. Bob's told us we have statistics we can look at after the year, and then we can revisit it.
Yeah, so we, so we're asking for a report in a year? I don't know that we need to have an amendment to do that. We just asked for it and they'll provide it.
And we'll, we'll track those incidents where the people don't want the cats back. We can, we can track that as well and report that back.
Okay.
We want what's best for the citizens, and we think this is it.
Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second James' amendment for a vote.
All right, so we're voting on the amendment. This is item 9E1. Cast your votes. The amendment fails four to five. All right, is there a motion then on item 9E2? How are you voting? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Go for it.
So now we're voting on the ordinance without the amendment. Cast your votes. It passes eight to one.
And Mayor, I'm hearing that you would like a report back next summer to see what we've accomplished over the next year.
All right. All right, on item 9F, this is a public hearing regarding the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. Because it's a public hearing, is there anyone here that was hoping to speak on this item today?
Right.
All right, is there a motion then to adopt and confirm the assessment rule?
I'll make the motion, there.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And I think we have a companion item. This is the ordinance that would adopt and set the assessment rule that goes with the previous item. Is there a motion here?
So moved.
All right, cast your votes. And G passed unanimously as well. All right, item 9H is the continuation of our previous labor agreements while the negotiations continue. And we do this because it's the first meeting of the new fiscal year. Is there a meeting on, a motion on 9H? Okay. Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And I guess item, actually, 9H was for ask-me. And then so 9I will be the same thing I just discussed on the police. All right, we're voting on item 9I. It passed unanimously. And then 9J is our agreement with the firefighters. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9K, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9L, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order? Cast your votes. Item 9L passed unanimously. Item 9M, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9N is a resolution regarding a city's lawsuit with the Megachina Hotels.
Yeah, it's a desire to initiate litigation to go collect back hotel taxes.
All right, and is there a second? And we do not necessarily need executive session, do we, Wiley? Okay. So we have a motion, a second. We're voting on item 9N. It passed unanimously. Item 9O is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9O? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion?
Sir.
Okay, cast your votes. And item 10A passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from counsel, and we're having a final hearing today. And Mark, we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak on the item which you've provided the leadership.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, as you said, an ordinance on final hearing. It's to amend Chapter Eight of our Oklahoma City municipal code with regards to our animal welfare officers in the judicial system. Principally, it does three things. It provides safety to area residents. It has enhanced penalties for violators, and it clarifies requirements for reclaiming an impounded animal. I know there are several people that want to speak, including, I know at least one of Mrs. Short's daughters is here today, and so I'd hope at this time we could have those people that are interested in speaking, speak.
All right, Mead, you want to come up and speak?
My name is Mead Hedgeson. I live at 5733 Northwest 86th Street in Oklahoma City. This ordinance pending here is all you've got right now. It's all you're probably ever going to have in terms of enhancing the public safety because there is no way that animal control or the police department can respond soon enough once the dog attack has started. That's too late. So the second thing is, the requirement is that the dog be confined, dogs generally. I have a neighbor, he's in his late 70s. He's lived in the house for a long time. His fence has deteriorated. The neighbor on the other side, also on the other side of my back fence, did put up a hog wire fence with T-folds. That's not very expensive, but for my neighbor to replace his fence is very costly. The responsibility for the confinement must be left with the dog owner, not the neighbor who happens to have a fence that's deteriorated. With that, I have to say one other thing. The thing I get with my water bill, it says if you have an emergency, call 911. I call 911. I'm not picking on anybody. They can't respond... They can't respond fast enough from animal welfare. In fact, the police department can't get there soon enough. That's really not the solution. Prevention's the solution. I'm done. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Mead. Emily?
I was about to do first, and I'm just, that's my husband, but I do have one thing to say.
Okay, you might pull the microphone down. I might be able to hear you a little better. Thank you.
I have been watching this man work extremely hard to repair our fence. Our fence has been the only defense against the pit bulls on the other side, until they were forced on the, on the west side to put up the enclosure, at which time they were very abusive verbally to my husband, who was trying to repair our fence to contain the other dogs that are on the other side. I can't stress this enough. The man's been working on this like crazy. He's 73 years old, as am I. On Saturday, he went to get supplies, and a pit bull from the east side was in our backyard. Now, you have to understand my position. I believe that this pit bull is part of the litter of the puppies that killed Cecile Short. Now, I'm not going to go out in my backyard and say, "Nice doggy, go home." They refuse, refuse to put up a fence to contain these pit bulls. How much more damage and how much more pain do people have to suffer because people are not made to enforce this?
What are you, what would you like us to do?
I would like you to pass the ordinance, but clearly, even if you pass the ordinance, when we call 911, the police have told us we can't, we can't respond. When we call Animal Control, which we did at 10 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, in which my husband waited until somebody responded to even go out in the backyard because of me being hysterical over what I, I really firmly believe in my heart, that was a whole day he lost working on our fence.
Yeah, let me...
We can't even use our yard.
Let's get some clarification. If, if a person calls 911 believing their property or their, their livelihood is in danger, what is our response going to be?
John or Bob?
And, and this is calling 911. It's not necessarily calling the Animal Welfare Department. If they call 911 and believe that a vicious dog is in, on their property.
Well, they'll dispatch a police officer's right away. It's a priority for them. And they'll also contact city, the shelter, but we don't have the staff to get there quickly. So, we advise people, call 911, and they'll dispatch right away.
Okay. Do you want our police chief to come in and discuss what would happen if the police are called? You're suggesting that nothing's going to happen?
Yeah, an immediate response, because we certainly didn't know. Twice 911 has told us to call the animal shelter.
Okay, but that's good information to have. Why don't we bring the police chief in?
I, I think the key is how they talk, what, how they explain the incident to the dispatch.
Yeah, I, you know, I could see a 911 operator trying to figure out whom to call, and perhaps we can get some clarification, and perhaps some different instruction or training for our 911 operators.
He was in the, yeah, he was in the building. I don't know if he's still here or not.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what I have to say. He's going from the strictly, you know, you need something legal to get it done, but I'm going from not being able to use my backyard and having the dogs there and...
Okay, I'm here. You stay here. Bill, her question is, when she calls 911 and she thinks there's a vicious dog in the backyard, that she may or may not get an appropriate response that meets her expectation. What would you say?
Well, we, if, if there's a vicious animal and they call 911, we will send an officer out to evaluate what it is and the situation. I mean, if it's contained in her backyard, then we'll contact Animal Welfare. I mean, they'll be, they'll be contacted at the same time to also respond.
It sounds like we might need to have our 911 operators maybe asking some additional questions to check on the suspected concern that they have, if, if we're getting Animal Control involved, if they think the police should be involved.
Right. Well, if they say they've, they've got some concerns, they do ask a lot of questions, but we still want an officer to go out and just evaluate what's going on for themselves by being out there.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for the police chief?
No, I just wanted to point out that it's been really difficult. We're still trying to get that fence done, and the dogs are still there, and they're not being, they're not being menacing, so I'm...
And, you know, just, just listening to your side of the story, and we certainly haven't heard any other side of the story, if there are any others. But it sounds like they would have some, potentially some, some legal opportunities across the street, Wiley, would they not? If you have a, a neighbor whose dog continually is tearing up your property and your fence...
Responsible for it.
Yeah, so your, your neighbor, by the way you're describing it, is responsible for the destruction of your property. It isn't always something we can handle, but across the street, at the, at the courthouse, you may have a civil opportunity over there.
Well, but the ordinance, as I understand it, does make everybody responsible for their dogs to be confined. Is that correct?
It does. Oh, no, we, we have police action we can take.
Right.
But your, your concerns seem to be just about the continual destruction of the fence.
Oh, yeah, well, we haven't had to test that yet because it isn't totally repaired. I hope they don't chew on it, and we have to do more work.
Yeah, there's, there's less we can do on that aspect of it.
I, I understand that.
And don't take any of this as legal advice or a lack of sympathy for your concern, because I, I can tell how important this is to you.
I'm not worried about the legal advice.
I think all of us sympathize for your position. All right, thanks for coming down. All right. With that, no one else has signed up to speak that I know of. Mark, you want to make a motion on the ordinance?
I just wanted to know if you would like to speak on behalf of your mother. You're more than happy to. If you don't, that's fine, too.
Lisa Carlyle, 11-1, 11017, Chanceller Court. I just want to thank you for all the work you've done. I know she would be just honored that this is happening, you know? And I'm sorry it was too late, but hopefully, for another family, it won't be.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Before I make the motion, the one thing I want to do, thank, is the, the opinion staff at the Daily Oklahoman who came out in support of this ordinance, and, and they got really quick to the point, and that was that this is targeted at irresponsible owners. And they say it best in the last paragraph. The long and short of it is that owners of most dogs won't be significantly affected by the new ordinance. However, those who keep potentially violent dogs would face greater responsibility, as well they should. And so, I thank the Daily Oklahoman for supporting that. I also want to thank Jonathan Gary, Bob Teener, Laura Johnson, Orville Jones, Rita Douglas Tally, Kenneth Jordan, and Cindy Richards, because they put a lot of hours into this, and I think it's a good ordinance, and I would move for its approval at this time.
All right, we have a motion, a second. We're voting on item 11A. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, item 11B is a resolution that would authorize us to continue to work with the Oklahoma City Public School System.
That is correct. It formalizes the process. Brett Logan is here from the Municipal Counselor's Office, if you have any questions.
C, I have one.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions on item 11B? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Still on items from council. Mark, you have anything for us? Okay, John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I had an opportunity to speak at the school board meeting. I know some may question the reason why I spoke at the school board meeting, but I was there speaking on behalf of every black elected official as relates to the closing of a particular school. Some may question whether or not I should have gotten involved in that process. After the school board member reached out to the black elected officials, we all said, "Hey, we needed to do something." I know that one of my colleagues will probably show the video of me giving my speech, but I'm no different than any black councilman who has sat in this seat. I'm no different than the former, the late Dow, the late Atkins, the late Timpton, the late James, former councilwoman Willa Johnson, former councilman Skip Kelly, who all have advocated in some type of form or fashion as relates to the conditions, as relates to the quality of education in Ward 7. I, I know I did, after talking to one of the school board members, I did get on Facebook and put it out there that, yes, the school district was looking at closing the school, because she asked me. She said, "Councilman Pettis, I need your help." I have tried to advocate to the best of my abilities to represent this, this area that is African-American, but the school district is not hearing me. I need your help. I need the black elected officials' help. And so, that's what I did. I know that a video is getting ready to be played soon of me going out, but again, I don't apologize. I did what the people asked me to do. I did what the Neighborhood Association asked me to do. I did what the pastors asked me to do, and so, I have no regrets in that. I hope the school district will work more with the black elected officials. It's sad to say that the relationship is not a good working relationship, but I hope that one day it will be. I hope that we are able to work hand-in-hand with all the school board members. Like I said, I, I know some have questioned me getting involved, but again, I was speaking on behalf of every black elected official, and I'm no different than the previous Ward 7 council folks. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Briefly, Mayor, I just wanted to congratulate the after-school network and thank the council for supporting that effort. They work with the students at FD Moon and at Eugene Fields Elementary School, and the kids had their final wrap-up session last week at the Chesapeake Bow House, and the results are just stunning. They're doing great things, and I really appreciate everybody's efforts in that regard.
David?
No, thank you.
All right. Todd? Larry? Ed?
All right, so there are some technical difficulties.
I did want to show that video, because I think, I think we have a problem. And that is that with regularity, we are addressing members of another elected body in a way that I don't think is healthy. And I think it is different than what other council persons from this body have done. I can't show the video, but essentially, it involves a raised voice addressing the superintendent and the chair of the Oklahoma City Public Schools by name, pointing at them and accusing them of lying.
They did.
And that if this was a white neighborhood as opposed to a black neighborhood, that it would be a different situation.
I do not whatsoever, Councilman Shadid, apologize for anything I said at all, because that is the truth. I mean, it, it, when we, and, and maybe we should have a larger discussion about race and that I think sometimes our city we're afraid to have. Everyone knows that from time to time, I, I do come off as a preacher, but if you, if you take the, the content of black elected officials, that's something that has a vast majority of every black elected official, when they speak, sometimes they do sound like a preacher. I don't apologize for that, and I don't apologize for saying what I said, because as a black man, I'm telling you what I saw. I'm telling you what the community felt. So, I don't apologize at, at all. And, and my words are the same words as all the other black elected officials who represent that area. And I don't apologize for that. I'm just going to tell you straight up, I'm not going to apologize had the school district been upfront and honest.
Okay, let's, let's just hear what you had to say, because I think there's an important point that needs to be addressed.
Yes, after talking to Ms. Budd, I did become the black Donald Trump, and I did get on social media, and I informed the people what was going on. And I don't apologize. I'm sorry, but the excuse that you all have given is unacceptable. And it is? It is truly unacceptable to wait till the last minute to inform the community that you are thinking about closing their school. If this neighborhood was a white neighborhood, Madam Chair, you wouldn't have given that direction. And she did. Madam Superintendent, you would not have given that direction. Ms. Rebecca Budd, I say thank you for informing the community what was going on. And I am going to talk about this issue at city council meeting, because I don't have any time limits at city council meeting, but I have less than three minutes here, but I just want to publicly say, "Thank you for doing your job." And Madam Chair and Madam Superintendent, y'all have work to do. And again, Councilman Shadid, I don't apologize for anything that I said. I wish one day you walk a mile in a black elected official's shoe. I wish you would. Spend a day with me, Councilman Shadid, and see what I see every single day. And you get one, one day, councilman. One day. Spend one day with me. You will see the reason why I'm so frustrated. You will see the reason why the other black elected officials are so frustrated with the school system. And so, so, so as you criticize what I said, I ask you, Councilman Shadid, walk a mile in my shoes for one day. See what I see every single day. Every single school, there's our Oklahoma City Public Schools, that's in Ward 7, are falling behind. Former Superintendent Rob New said, "Black students are dying at the vine because of the school district." Rob New said that.
I, I want you, I want us all ultimately to be successful, and I don't think that it's effective. And there are two reasons I don't think it's effective. Number one, we should look at our own house. We live in a glass house. We have, let me, let me just finish, if I may.
Sure.
We should make sure that the city addresses its issues on race, and that we have, I, I welcome that discussion on race at the city level. We are potentially heading towards a Title VI issue on our transit system, which involves race. Certainly, there are arguments both ways, and I'm sure we'll work it out. But if somebody, another elected official from another body came and...
I am no councilman.
Please, please let me finish, John.
I, I won't let you finish.
Please let me finish.
Sure.
The GO bond, all right, was on the northeast side. It was done at the end of the thing. I mean, I think there are reasons for that, but it, but if another elected official of another government body came and yelled at us and accused us of racism, it wouldn't be productive. What's productive and effective is Mark doing the leadership and arranging that meeting next month. That is going to be highly effective on race. Meg, working on the texting, the homelessness thing, I saw that. That is going to make an impact for the poor and the disenfranchised. If a member of an elected body, another government branch, came and talked to our mayor in that way, I would hope that we would all rally around, and we would not tolerate someone coming...
Again, Councilman Shadid, I do not apologize for what I said in the house.
I understand that you're, I'm saying it's not effective.
Walk a mile in my shoes. Walk a mile in my shoes, councilman.
Rob New left for many reasons, but it did not help that a councilman yelled at him to where he thought, that the staff around thought that they should call the police. Aurora Laura, this is not the first time that she has been yelled at in public, accused of lying, accused of being a racist.
Her own school board member said that she was lying.
It is not effective.
Her own school board member said she was lying. And by the way, the school board member who said that she was lying was a black elected official, for the record. For the record. Charles Henry pointed out that one thing we do not do is lie. He was referring to the superintendent. So, that was, again, another black elected official calling the superintendent out, okay?
I, I don't, I believe that there, I think that the issue of closure, first of all, if I'm Aurora Laura, what I've noticed on the first five times that I've floated the idea of floating a school, is that you get this community response, you get a great... You get a great, in this particular case, there are things that they cannot talk about, the health conditions of the principal, et cetera. You had four teachers returning who had any...
The number four was not the correct number.
Please, let me just...
But if you want, you and I should have a meeting, and we should talk about this. So you can better understand again my view. And like I said, I don't apologize, and I know you want to make your point, but I'm just going to tell you, hey, what you see is what you get. And I was standing up for my community. I did what the people asked me to do. And I do not apologize for that at all. If you and I want to have, you want to have a conversation to talk about how we move things forward, I'm more than willing to have that conversation. But again, I don't apologize for it at all. If you, if you look at the whole footage of that school board meeting, you will find that the black elected officials, the school board members, they had things worse to say than I did. So it was not just me. And again, I don't apologize.
I did watch the whole meeting. There were no other elected officials who went and spoke and accused them of being...
Well, again, their own school board member, Charles Henry. So again, I don't apologize. I don't apologize for it.
John, we've heard, we understand your position.
Yeah, it's not effective. It's not, there are, the legislature is putting us all in a situation where more of this is coming, not just at North Highlands. There are other...
This had nothing to do, this had nothing to do with budgets at all. This had to do with broken promises by the school district. The school district put in place a number of years ago, an action plan to improve North Highlands, but they never, never followed the plan. It didn't have anything to do with money at all.
It had everything to do, the budget cost, cost us...
It had nothing, Councilman. It had nothing to do with budget at all.
An assistant principal was left because of budget. The union was not willing to give a stipend after this. They've now, the union has now been willing to give a $3,000 stipend for people to come in. Now you have teachers coming into that school that weren't before this process. They would have had a private meeting had you not put it on social media.
I don't regret it.
And it would almost certainly have...
I don't regret it.
It almost certainly would have been deferred, and we could have had...
No, I beg to differ. I beg to differ, Councilman. I beg to differ.
All right.
Yeah.
Ed, you had enough?
I think I've had enough. I've had enough in more than one area.
Again, Councilman, if you got a problem with how I do things, you and I need to sit down, and you need to walk a mile in my shoes, I will walk a mile in your shoes, okay? If you want to really have and figure out how to move things forward, see what I see every single day in Ward 7 when it comes to education. I do not apologize. But the school district has my commitment that I will work with them to improve every last school that's in my ward.
I think there, I think this body, hopefully this speaks for itself. Hopefully, this body understands we need to get our own ship in order. I strongly believe, I have bitten my lip week after week after week. I believe that there are behavior that is unethical at best, that is crossing the line, that is reflecting on all of us. I think that it is a cancer, a type of cancer, that if it is not addressed, can metastasize to all of us and the effectiveness of this body. And I'll leave it at that. I understand that's somewhat cryptic. But we have an issue with some behavior that has not occurred in decades.
I disagree.
On this body. That's it.
James? City manager reports?
Nothing this morning.
All right. As soon as it's to be heard, Mark, it's just you. All right. Thanks, everybody. Words earned.